And note that Commissioner Sangster is excused tonight because it's his birthday. But we do have enough for a quorum. So, let's start with an approval of the minutes.
I don't know, you need to follow your agenda. Volunteer appreciations first.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong page.
Let's have a modified agenda.
Okay, we have volunteer appreciation night from Phil Gessner.
Great. Well, because you guys didn't have meeting last month, which was volunteer month, we actually are pushing it into this month, May month. And just as appreciation, I know you guys spend probably one of the commissions has some of the most time involved with planning and whatnot, but we really appreciate your efforts. And we have some cookies here for tonight. Some of them have raisins in them, which come from fruit, which is good for you, so you can try that out. Don't have any fruit in them, so they're not so good for you. But thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Those raisin ones are the decepticon of cookies. You think you're getting chocolate chip and it's like...
Thanks.
Phil?
Well, dairy, right?
One question. You didn't save these from last month, did you?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
They were grapes last month.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, now let's go to approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
My second?
Good. Motion to all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I wasn't here, so abstain.
Okay, so aye. So, three approvals and one abstained. Okay, parents of interested citizens, we have none. So, we can move right into the public hearing on the text amendment. And staff?
Go ahead. Got the hammer there?
All right, well, let me first offer apologies from Nate Brown, the director. He had a other obligation, I'll guess, I'll say. He had some family stuff that came up. But tonight, we are bringing a text amendment to section 2.127, which is currently called the historical landmark overlay zone. With the proposed amendment, we're looking to change its name to historic resources. Drop the overlay zone mumbo jumbo. So, this amendment was kind of born out of the legislative process. There was Oregon administrative rules were changed with a couple of things, specifically regarding owner consent and local government's responsibility to protect national register resources. And for, I think most of you probably know, there was actually an application filed, which in all of my years working for the city of Kaiser, we've never had an application filed. And I've been here literally 20 years. Yes, I am that old. But we had an application filed. Actually, I believe the application was on like January 31st. I deemed it complete in February for the possibility of a designation. And what was very apparent in looking at our development code, it was not consistent with the OARs for owner consent requirements. So, we had an interested citizen, applied for a historic designation. We by law have to notify the property owner of the application. They refused consent. And so, it was kind of a big wheel spinning process. And so, we wanted to remedy that. And so, the amendment proposed, and Shannon just handed it out to you, there's been some tweaking, because Shane is not a lawyer. Shannon is. So, my name's semi-close. I've got, you know, a few of the letters in it, but clearly not the educational background or that extra little Esquire status. So, there was some tweaks that Shannon needed to make from the legal perspective, but essentially, I mean, the crux, the staff report was pretty short. The crux of the changes were to clarify that owner consent process. And the way that we're proposing to do that is to require property owner applications, or the planning commission, or the city council to initiate the applications. And then, the other piece is to clarify that national register resources have to have the same afforded protections at our local level than a locally designated resource. So, whether or not we've locally designated a national register resource, we would still provide it the same protections. And there's some review timeframes, 120-day time period for before permits could be issued to remodel, or destroy, or move, or things like that. So, really, I don't know if, you know, obviously, you just got a new little amendment in front of you, which, which so did I. And Shannon can kind of speak to those little changes, but on the previous document you'd received, I would be happy to entertain any questions with that. And otherwise, I think I'm done talking, so.
Yes, Shan?
So, apologize for the rainbow colors there, but I do like to try to, it's almost more for us than you folks. Oops. Sorry. The rainbow colors are almost more for us than you folks, because I can tell who made which changes. So, just so you can, you know, either give credit or lay blame, whichever you choose, the blue is Shane's first draft. The red are the changes I made. And, can you hear okay, Kim?
Uh huh.
Okay.
I guess we're not on TV.
We are on TV for folks. And this, we did this, was it last night?
That's what I said.
Yeah. The, Kim knows, the audio problems that we've had, they're tied into these monitors. So, we are being broadcast tonight. As you can tell, they're working pretty normally. And that was the problem. When the monitors are on, everything goes crazy. And the budget meetings and the council meeting, budget meeting last night and Monday night was awful. I mean, really bad. So, they tracked it down, and I don't know how, if they're gonna have to switch TVs or what they're gonna have to do. But that's the reason. We are being broadcast, but the TVs are off. So, the red languages are my changes. And then, the ones I just handed out are just a couple of minor changes that are hard to tell, because they're purple. And those were based on a meeting I had just before lunch today, finally Shane and Nate and I could coordinate our schedules and get together. And they're really pretty minor, but in most respects, and that is, and I'm not gonna blame Nate, but he, I understood finally what he was getting at. Nate feels, and I would agree with this generally, that the idea of a, this isn't Portland. We don't have a Laurelhurst or Latt Edition, if you're familiar with that, okay? And the idea of like a district, an actual district, seemed problematic to Nate. And I would agree with him. And so, we took out, and a lot of that's red. And then, on one page, I took out districts, because I was just automatically scratching district, and I took it out when I shouldn't have. It had to do with natural register resource. The other thing, going back to the first page, was under, it's a couple places, under demolish and under resource, down at the bottom of the first page. Again, Nate wanted to point out, we're not looking at having historical areas. And I was trying to say, well, I'm trying to get just the area around a building, though, so that if somebody has a, and so, we all agreed that the word site is already in there. And so, that kind of covered it. So, there's a couple of changes like that. And they're really pretty minor, as far as the purple changes go. The basic idea Shane has already indicated was to comply with state law by making it clear that if you have a national register historic site, that it's kind of automatically in. And then, the other issue, which is the most substantive issue, is the issue regarding who applies. So, right now, it's the planning commission and the council, and the change is, it used to be anybody could apply, even if you didn't own the property. The proposal is to change that, so other than the council and the planning commission, only the property owner can apply. And the reason we thought that was appropriate is because of the statute that Shane was pointing out. The statute says that if a property owner refuses to consent, then the process is dead. I mean, you can't, you can't go forward over the property owner's consent. So, the idea of having somebody else propose it on somebody else's property just didn't make sense to us. Just, so, okay, you propose it for this property, your neighbor's property, and the neighbor has to go through the drill of, we have to go through the whole thing of notice, setting up the file, and then the property owner says, I don't want to do this. Now, there is a section that we added back again, based on Shane. I made an error, and that's on page four, and that's the property owner refusal to consent. I initially deleted that, because I thought we don't need that, because only a property owner can submit an application anyway under the proposal. But Shane pointed out, of course, that the council or the planning commission can do so. So, you could have a situation where either the planning commission, or the council on their own, or based on a request, or a petition from another group, you know, like K-PIC, or some citizen says, we think you should do this. And the planning commissioner of the council says, I think you're right, that is a historic site. And then, that property owner would get notice, and they could refuse to consent. And so, you could have an initiation that way. So, that's why we still needed that section. But in any event, I think, I mean, the couple of other changes that we made were just kind of Scrivener's in fashion, I mean, the latest changes, so I won't bother trying to find the more purple for you. But I think that's, and that's about all I had to add right now.
Michael?
So, if someone does come forward with a city-owned property that is not, this is all hypothetical, of course, but...
I mean, a city-owned property?
City-owned property that is not on the registry, but they think it should be, would that person become the applicant, or would the city then become?
If a person came forward and said that I think a city-owned property should be on, should be designated as a resource, then they'd have to request the planning commission or the council to initiate that process. And they'd have that, and you folks or the council would have the discretion on whether to initiate that process or not.
But that...
But they couldn't, they couldn't actually initiate the process themselves, they'd have to request.
Okay. Shannon? Then let's look at the old Kaiser School next door. Who is the owner of that?
The building is owned by Kaiser Heritage Foundation. The ground is owned by the city.
Okay.
And my suggestion, before you go any further, that in that unique circumstances, both of those owners, the landowner and the building owner, could refuse to consent, shall we say?
Okay.
If they wanted to. I thought, is that...
The owner has a definition for owner?
No, I guess I was embarrassed to say, well, the old school, isn't it designated, actually designated? Isn't it on the national?
No.
On national.
It is not.
It's listed as, it has significance, so if somebody wanted to go through the process, like SHIP-O designates it as a, as a building that prob, I mean, it may have the qualities, but it hasn't gone through the formalized process. So, it's, we have no, the city of Kaiser has no national registry properties within our city limits.
I thought it was. I didn't know that. Okay.
So...
Matt?
I understand the opportunity for an individual to come forward to either points of interest and then points of interest to either the planning commissioner or the council. I just feel like, you know, in the event of, let's say, an owner that lives outside of the area or outside of the state, somebody would have to have sort of the wherewithal to do that. And I think that a lot of these kinds of things are discovered in the process of an application process. And I guess, so, there's sort of two thoughts. One would be, in the event that something like this does show itself in the process in terms of permitting or whatever, does that then delay the process? I think, would there be a hold in the public hearings until that significant issue of historical site, or whatever was determined, either complete or not complete? And then, in addition to that, and I think, actually, I'll delay on the other part. I guess, so my question is, if somebody does come forward and say, hey, you know, and they're in the public process, it seems a little bit counterintuitive, in my opinion, for, I mean, it kind of seems like incumbent on us, like somebody comes and gives testimony and says, hey, you know, this, you know, particular sidewalk has been here since, you know, 1843, and we really like the sidewalk, and it's got to stay here. At that point, we would have, it would be incumbent on the planning commission to sort of say, okay, well, we recognize that need. We'd have to suspend potentially the public hearing if it was actually in a land use or permitting process, or how does that?
Let me back up a little bit. I'm not getting the scenario, Matt. Are you saying that we're in a different process? We're in a different application, and somebody's testifying?
Yes.
Okay, so you're talking about, let's assume...
So, it's on the record blow for a permit?
Okay, so, so you, the planning commission is considering a quasi-judicial case of some sort?
Correct.
And then, somebody brings up this historical issue?
Correct.
Well, they could ask you to initiate that, and they could put it in that form, and you folks could decide that. But if somebody already has an application in, that's not gonna affect that application, I don't think.
Okay. So, then I guess the second part of that is, maybe there could be an opportunity for some clarity in terms of the process, somebody, an interested party outside of either the planning commission or the council, could take in order to initiate this process. I think the initiation thing kind of has two sort of meanings to me, right? So, by them coming and saying, hey, we want this, that's kind of initiating the conversation. But to initiate the process for a historical designation, that's an official action that would have to be taking place by either the planning commission, or the council, or the property owner in this case, correct?
Right. That's correct.
So, I guess by removing them, I'm just...
By removing...
An interested party outside of the three days of the...
From actually initiating, not requesting to initiate.
Correct.
Well, that's a policy question for you folks, and ultimately for council, of course, on, and it's a major change we have here. And from our perspective, Shane, Nate, and I, once we discovered the statute that said you have, that a property owner can refuse to consent, it just didn't seem to make a lot of sense to us to say, well, any interested party can suggest anybody's ground as historical designation. I mean, that was already, in my mind, and this is more philosophical than legal, that was already kind of a stretch, but it's like, well, maybe that'd be okay, because maybe the person who's initiating that is, has a lot of knowledge, and it is historical, and the property owner maybe isn't against it, but just doesn't have the wherewithal to really push it either, so that's okay. But not when you have the statute that flat-out says the property owner can refuse to consent. In my mind, in your scenario, the person who's interested in it, you know, informally, should go to the property owner and say, you know, your property has this background, it has this history. I think it'd be really neat, and I'd help you initiate this process. And then, if the property owner was interested, then they could initiate it. And if the property owner wasn't interested, he's gonna refuse to consent anyway. So, you know, and then, the other option would be, that person, if he's really that interested in it, could say, well, I still think it should be, and they can approach you folks or the council. The problem is, is these cases, although they don't look big, is still a bunch of work for staff.
Sure.
And the idea of having to formally initiate, we have to do notice, get going with the process, we have timelines, that we have to send stuff out, and then, like this last go-around, oh, property owner refused to consent. It was like, well, that was, yeah. So, that's a little bit more of the kind of background thinking that the way we got to it. But it is a policy question. So, you know, ultimately, if you folks feel like you want the option for somebody to formally initiate it, and have it go through the entire process, other than the property owner, the council, or the planning commission, then you can make that recommendation. And we can put that language back.
Follow-up. My only hesitation on this, I think anytime the government takes the people's opportunity away from participating meaningfully in any process, is walking a very fine line. Now, I thank you for the clarity, because now I understand more clearly that by coming and having a conversation, it's still preserving that opportunity for them to come to either the council or the planning commission to do that. Hopefully, they could approach the property owner, and in cases where a property owner does not live in state, or doesn't know that, that they'd be willing to have that conversation. So, initially, it kind of felt like, you know, we're sort of taking something away, taking a member of Kaiser's opportunity away from them, but really, it's just establishing a different set of criteria for this to happen. And maybe at that point, you know, here's your guidelines, rather than just saying, hey, I want to do this. So, thank you for the opportunity to clarify.
Okay. Comments, Crystal, Michael?
Yeah, like, two questions. First, what, is there a minimum age of something for it even to be considered, at least from an age standpoint?
So, in our, this is where national register properties, yes. In our ordinance, we have the criteria, which basically, it's not criteria, sorry, it's decision factors. So, in that decision factors, it does have, I mean, there's what, 11, 13? There's 13 things. And there's 13 different factors that are listed. One of them that does speak to 50 years old or older, in conjunction with other factors listed above, that's number 12 on the list. But the one thing is, we did make an add here, that actually was Shannon's suggestion, and I thought it was a good one, because generally, in land use, when we have a decision and we have criteria that says, okay, if you're gonna divide land, or you're gonna, you know, do a subdivision, or a new building permit, you have to meet every standard that applies. And in this case, the state is...
Criteria, you have to, you have to show compliance with the criteria.
Correct, yes. You have to show compliance with the proposal, or that it can be conditioned to comply with those criteria. In this case, we are very specifically and purposefully saying that the criteria are these 13 things, and that it is discretionary upon the planning commission, or the city council, the governing body, basically, that you can give more weight to certain factors as it's determined. Now, the one thing we didn't talk about a lot, because honestly, it gets into very lawyerville, and I'm not really comfortable with that as much, but the big thing about this text amendment, we were trying to clarify so that the general end user, the citizen in Kaiser, and frankly Shane, who administers the code, can use it and it's intuitive. But honestly, it was born out of the rulemaking process with the administrative rules, and then specifically in relation to the state planning goal five, which governs not just historic resources, but natural resources and all of this. And it's actually the first time that that, the rule and the interpretations around goal five have been changed since like, I think, the early 90s, when it was initially established. But anyway, all that to say, it specifically sets up this process that if a city adopts a local inventory, they have to do it as a land use decision, so it can be appealable, so people can have standing. So, it's not just the city going in and waving a magic wand. And it's hard. I looked at quite a few cities to see if there was a better model to bring in a historic resource section. And I mean, Salem, our neighbor, you know, to the south, their historic section is like 220 pages long, because they have a specific historic commission, they have multiple districts, and individually, each of those districts and areas, they may have a different set of criteria that the neighborhood or the stakeholders have determined is what's important for them. So, in this case, what we're saying is that, Michael, yes, there is an age reference, but it wouldn't necessarily be incumbent upon the commission or the council, as they were recommending a historical designation, it wouldn't have to meet a certain age requirement. That would be a factor that would be something to consider, but these other factors would go along with it. You know, the significance to Kaiser, the significance to the area, et cetera, et cetera. So, I don't know if that's helpful or not, but...
Yeah. I do want to point out, at least in my packet, the pagination follows five, six, seven, but it seems like there's a chunk missing from what was originally sent in the email.
This one that I just handed out?
Yeah, I see the 10.
Well, there's two lists of factors.
It was on page five, right?
Well, there's another list on page three. Well, there's another list on page three.
I was looking at the wrong section.
Yeah, there's two different ones that are confusing. And while, and while I'm at it, to add to what Shane was talking about, I, and this, this is a little dicey because most land use is supposed to have specific criteria and you meet all the criteria. But when I looked at this list, it was like, how do you, do you really have to meet every single one of them? And to me, the way that list was listed, they were more like factors to consider. And that's why I changed the language, because criteria has a specific meaning. And then, like Shane said, the, the red language at the top of page four, not all factors must be present in council and its discretion may give more weight to certain factors as it may determine. So it's, it's a lot of flexibility that could come back to bite us, but this is a little different animal than what we usually see in a land use setting.
And I, oh, go ahead, sorry. I was just gonna say, one, and one of the reasons why I actually thought it was a really good ad by Shannon's part is that if we were to take it as to say all criteria have to be met, we as a city would only be able to designate something that was already on the national registry. And I don't think intuitively that was the intent, and that's never been the intent of a local inventory of historic resources, cuz what may be locally significant is not necessarily, necessarily nationally significant in communities. So that was kinda why we went that route, so.
My other question was, um, under the demolition and moving section for the, uh, where is it now?
One, two, seven, oh, five?
Yeah, under the additional requirements, which is now I, section I. Uh, number one, it says, list the resource for sale with a real estate agent for a period of no, not less than ninety days. And that the re- a real estate agent shall advertise for a minimum of ten days. The ten days over five week period, where did that come from and, and why is it so different?
That's, as you can tell, is the original language and we just didn't tweak that. Um, and, you know, tweak, tweak away. I thought it was a little odd, but that's not something that Shane and Nate and I messed with. Um, so I, you know, I, I wouldn't have any hurt feelings if you folks wanna change that or delete it or whatever. I think the concept behind that is to try to find someone else that would save it. So you have a property owner that says, you know, I'm just not into the history thing and I need to sell my property. And so it's a, it's, it could be a win-win where the property owner can get cashed out, but the building can still be saved, you know, similar to what they did with the Frank Lloyd Wright house, if you might recall, that moved to Oregon Gardens, so.
I guess my question was, it seems like, yeah, you have to be working with a real estate agent for not less than ninety days, but then it says it has to be advertised for only ten days and-
But that's only if it's on the national register or designated in Kaiser as a historical resource.
No.
No.
This is, this is, oh, I see what you're getting at. Remember, this is the demolition part, so it's already been designated.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's already been designated. I see what you mean, Matt. And so, but still, I think, Mago, your, your point is, is gee, it's only has to be advertised for ten days over a five week period. And I don't know what that means nowadays, especially in the age of the internet.
Right.
Um, you, you notice that we scratched out, well, I guess you did that part, which made sense to me.
Because of the internet, yeah.
Because of the internet. So, I mean, I, I don't know what that means anymore. I mean, you could suggest deleting that entire sentence, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, Michael, just to be perfectly blunt, I didn't give it a ton of thought. As I went through the ordinance though, I went, I, uh, my wife and I have been looking for a house for a while. The last place we looked is in a newspaper. Like, we, we don't look in a newspaper, so I struck the newspaper piece out. I mean, just because I think there's a lot of different resources there. So our point was, you know, my point was, I think, employ the real estate agent and advertise the thing for sale. But for, as far as timeframe goes, I did not give that any critical thought. So absolutely open to your guys' suggestions on that, for sure.
And I understand having a minimum time, but that seemed so small compared to the ninety days.
What do you think would be appropriate, Michael?
Um, well, over a five week period, that's thirty-five days, um, you know. Which is even, still not even half the time they're listed, so why not just have a minimum of a five week period?
You-
And are you gonna define how, what advertising require, what meets that requirement? Is it electronic, is it just being on the internet, is it being in multiple listing service?
Well, I, I think that runs you into the changing technology buzzsaw, so I'd rather just have, say, advertised in all available media, I don't know.
Reasonably advertised according to industry standards, perhaps?
Yeah.
Something like that.
And just dr- make it for the five week period, though, is that the-
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Cuz if you did go with industry standards, anything that's listed these days goes into multiple listing and the agents have access to that. And the general public, you can go to Lamont Valley Multiple Listing Service, for example, and you can put in whatever criteria you want and it'll give you everything that's for sale, for rent, whatever.
Yeah, I, I'm just wanting to make sure that there's a good faith effort to, to put it out there for sale.
And that's gonna be in the Realtor's best interest too, because that's how they get paid.
Right, yeah, for sure. I, although I don't know if there's a way for someone to say, well, we tried to sell it and no one wanted it and so bring the bulldozer.
Well, if you list the resource for sale with the real estate agent, is that gonna trigger?
I, yeah, and I don't know, is that, does that trigger advertising when you list it with the real estate agent? Or is that just going, signing some contract with a Realtor saying, I wanna put this up for sale, but they don't have to do it until, you know, you tell them I don't want it up for the whole time or, you know what I mean? I guess I'm trying to avoid someone trying to game the system.
I can only speak from my personal experience, but Realtors access all potential buyers. And a lot of that today is done through electronics.
Yeah.
As opposed to the old time in the newspaper. But because they list everything, and I believe they're required to by the Salem Association of Realtors and maybe even statewide, to list things, they have to go to the multiple listing service, which automatically blows it out to the whole community, public, private and otherwise.
Well, in that case, then we may just strike the whole.
Whole sentence?
Whole sentence, yeah.
Yeah. Is that okay with the rest of the group?
Is that comfortable for Crystal and Matt? I think it's just landing it at nine days.
Yeah.
Um, let's go back to letter A and letter E, because I think they run together in this, in-
Same section?
Two, twelve, oh, four.
Okay.
A being the process for designating by the council, the planning commission or the owner and, um, then E is the removal of that designation by the same three parties, okay? Why, I, I mean, my comments were, basically, on this resource designation, um, it may be initiated by, and I would move that we look to delete the council and the planning commission as initiators, because I think property owners' rights are pretty sacred. And again, Matt, a few minutes ago, you brought up the situation where, you know, well, you know, if a property owner has to go, or, excuse me, someone who's interested in designating this as a possible, could still contact the property owner and say, Mr. Lawyer, you own this property at, you know, Herbert Farms up here. And I think that has historical significance. Have you considered? And then if you do, you can then go to the application process and get that done. But I don't personally believe that the city should be, or the county or the state, should be involved in taking away property owner rights. And this would allow the property owner, but I guess the, the takeout from that is if you leave item four in here, as long as the property owner has a refusal to con- can still refuse to consent, whether it be the city or the county, that does protect the property owner.
And Gary, to interrupt, that, that's state statute. So, I mean, you have to allow that refusal to consent. So that really takes care of the problem unless you're of a mind that you don't think the process should even be initiated with, without the property owner, sorry. It, it really is pretty simple. I don't know, did I make up that form myself? I think I did. I mean, we sent the Herbers a form I made up. Said, you know, notice and then refusal to consent. Here's notice and at the bottom, you know, you can check it and sign it if you're refusing to consent and, you know, we're required by law to send that and allow, cuz it, it doesn't just say property owner can refuse to consent. It says the local government has to allow that, meaning we have to make sure they know they have that right. So I, I think the problem is solved that way, but that's up to you folks, I mean.
But why, oh, go ahead, Crystal.
Um, I was just wondering if there is a potential consideration or risk for properties that are owned by banks or other third entities that aren't a person? And if, uh, the, the community might wanna push that that should be a historic area, but it's not a person that owns the property?
Well, that entity can still refuse to consent.
Mm-hmm.
I, I mean, it doesn't have to be a person, whoever the property owner is.
Property owner, yeah.
But it would give, sorry, it would give the city more of a opportunity to identify locations that they want to maintain so that they're not fighting a bank.
But again, just like Mr. Lawyer was saying, whether it be one human to another human versus one bureaucracy to a corporation, you still have to have that dialogue between the two. And I would suggest that a bank who's holding a property doesn't want an asset that's just costing them money. So they would be willing to talk to whoever that was, to give it that, you know, if they thought it was a designation.
So if, on the, on the specific removal of designation, the same process applies as to designating? Is, is that, is that what I'm gathering? Cuz we kinda, I think we kinda went like this, so I just wanna get back to that original piece. So, so I, I, I generally agree with what Mr. Whelan was saying. I, I think that, um, maybe by eliminating the council or the planning commission on that and then maybe adding a definition of property owner, which could be inclusive of not only physical property owner, but also like the city of Kaiser, I don't know how that would function. So that if it was, if it was city property, if there's, if that's necessary or not, I don't care about it.
Well, the, I was gonna say, Matt, the, the OAR defines the ownership, like what ownership means. So I, I didn't add that in, cuz there's like, it's like an A through F kinda deal. Now, I'll defer to Shannon, maybe that does need to be added in. I, I kind of assumed it was covered since it already was there and it does kinda talk about who the owner is. Um, so, but, yeah, I mean, I think to your guys' point, obviously, um, we weren't intending to change that current, the existing structure of the code that said, if you go through a designation process, you do this. If you go through removal process, you do this and you do findings. But, you know, clearly, if you guys want to amend that piece to reflect that, yeah.
Um, Mr. Johnson, point of order. Um, this is kind of discussion rather than, are we still in open?
Yeah, we're still in the hearing in case you folks might wanna continue or somebody might come in late. And I'll point out for the record that there's no one other than staff and the commission and council liaison in the room, so there's no one to testify. Um, back to the, the latest discussion about who initiates. I, m- my gut reaction personally is taking out the opportunity for the council, at least, if not the planning commission, to initiate that.
Removal, right? Removal designation.
No, I, oh, so let's, let's back up. Are we only talking about removal?
Yes, I understood that.
Okay, all right, I wasn't-
I'm talking about both because they go hand in hand. I mean, when they read through this, they're-
Right. Um, see, I thought. Well, I don't know on demolition and moving if it's clear who can apply, now that I'm thinking about it, is it?
It, it, if, if you're reading, as I read, um, the demolition portion specifically, uh, which is not in the same chapter that I think Commissioner Whelan's talking about. Um, it, it's, it's a separate section, I think, where Commissioner Whelan was talking about was on page, well, it was on, on page four, but it was under E, which is point zero four in the, uh, resource designation portion. So the demolition, the demolition notwithstanding, they have to be designated a historical landmark on the national register anyways, so that's, I believe, a separate issue. I think this is more specific to the removal of the designation for Kaiser purposes only, correct?
Right. So.
Yeah, they follow the same process.
Yeah, he says you follow the same process to remove the designation. That's really interesting. I don't know how that dovetails with the demolition and moving now that I think about it. I, and I think part of the reason is, is the, when we deleted historic district, we, we lost a little part of this whole thing. The idea that maybe you can des- you can remove it from designation and that would be a council or planning commission, um, kinda thing, just so that it jive with adding it. But actually demolishing or moving it would be something different.
And I think the, the one thing I would add, um, just from a, and it, it is kinda confusing and Kaiser is different in that we don't have a local inventory that's adopted. And honestly, the OAR, the, the administrative rule, the six, six sixty, division twenty-three, whatever, that governs all of this, it's with the understanding and it's giving guidance to how and what the local government has to do in that process of adopting that local inventory. Now, because we already had the structure in place, which was for, again, the old title was historic, well, the old definitions were landmarks and districts and we've smushed those together and to just say, everything is just gonna be called a resource now, whether or not it's a piece of property or it's a building or it's whatever, we're gonna say that's a historic resource on the local level. It is a little bit difficult since we don't have that adopted list, cuz it's sorta like we're, we're talking about something that may happen at some point, but it hasn't yet. But I do think it's, and I would say it's important to allow the initiation and the creation by council and planning commission because of the way that the OAR governs cities to adopt those as land use proceedings. But I don't think the removal piece, I don't think it speaks to that at all, Gary. So I mean, I think if the removal piece, you guys wanted to change that, I don't think that's as big of a deal. But I think the initiation piece, I would just say, I think this guy might have to do a little more research on that, because-
And that's what I was getting at, is with the designation part. Uh, I think the council and the planning commission need to have that opportunity to add to the inventory based on the goals and guidelines in our own comp plan.
So is everybody clear on this?
So, so, okay. I'm gonna try to digest this in my pea brain. So, under designation, right, Kaiser currently, now, this is only for Kaiser's inventory. This isn't taking into account anything for Shippo. This isn't taking any account on the national register. This is Kaiser saying, we're gonna create our own potential registry. So, um, they, the council and/or the planning commission come in and they say, we wanna initiate a process to designate, uh, I'm gonna say the gazebo out there as a historical landmark. Go through the process, it gets designated, everything's happy, it's on the Kaiser inventory. Then, and in this case, they're the landowner, so it's super easy, everybody's happy, wine and roses, right? So then, in order to remove it from the designated, um, category, or excuse me, removal of designation of a historical resource in Kaiser, either, under the current language, the council or the planning cos- commission, or in this case, the property owner, which is also the city, could come back and say, hey, you know what? We really liked that gazebo fifteen years ago, but we don't like it no more cuz we're gonna put up something different. They would first have to remove the designation of said asset before they went into the demolition and moving and all that kinda piece. Am I even in the ballpark, let alone the stadium?
Yeah, I, I think, I think theoretically, yes. Um, you know, now the, again, if you go into oh, five, where we govern demolition and moving, I mean, the other option in your scenario is, is that it's been designated and now somebody comes in and says, we wanna move that, or we wanna demo it, or we wanna modify it, or whatever. Now they have a local ordinance that gives protections. And that's the big key, is that there's, and, and it is, it, it is super hard, I mean, cuz we've got two different things at hand. We've got the initial designation and recognition that this is a local resource that we want to protect. And then, the separate process in section oh, five governs the protecting piece of it, which there's still a process that would have to go through, which in this case would actually go through this governing body, to determine whether or not it's appropriate to modify, move it, demo it and what kinda conditions would go along with that, you know. So, so I mean, I think, I, I think, Matt, in your example, it could be one of two things. You know, I think appropriate findings could be made to move that structure or do something with it. Or, yes, you could go through and say, we're gonna un-designate it essentially.
Should we put this piece to bed?
Yeah.
Cuz I have another question. Yeah, I have another question, not related specifically to this later on, but I just wanna make sure that-
Yeah, so what do you want, what do, what would you like to see in oh, five, Matt?
Personally, I mean, I, I-
Is it okay as written, basically?
I don't personally have any problems with the way it's written right now. Um, I, I, it's kinda, I, I, I am-
Have to make that decision based on now.
Well, I, I am reluctant, as you were, in the removal of a designation for the council and the planning commission, just to do that. I think if it's, if it's, if it's been designated, a historical resource in Kaiser and the property owner at that point has said, yeah, we wanna go through this process and do all of this, um, and they've gone through the painstaking process of, you know, participating in the designation process and then all of a sudden it becomes convenient on either the council or the planning commission to say, gosh, you know, we really wanna do that because we're changing our mind and wanting to redo this area because of convenience or whatever. Um, I think, you know, if I had my druthers as, as a property owner, I would say, no, you, that process needs to be designated through me and effect- effectively have the exact same right of refusal as was originally established when designating it. Is that kind of accurate? I mean, and, and, and I think we-
Undesigning is different than demo and removal.
I'm not talking about designator, I'm not talking about the demo and removal.
Okay.
But, but let's say, you know, Shane owns that gazebo. It's been established, he's said, yep, I want it to be a historical, uh, resource in the city of Kaiser and he's all about it, he, he's happy. And then the city of Kaiser comes out and says, no, we wanna put one of those whirligigs out there that makes all the kids sick, so we're gonna un-designate that and possibly rezone that for different purposes. Effectively, they'd have to get his permission as the property owner first, just as if they did when they were designating it, right?
Oh, I see. Um, I don't think that was the intent, but that's an interesting point.
I think you gotta ask permission at both ends, in my opinion, but-
Well, the statute doesn't require it. The state statute doesn't talk about requiring property owner consent to un-designate it, if you will, to remove it from designation.
Okay.
But, your point's still well taken because maybe that's something you should require. If the city says, you know, wanna take it, I, I don't know how the property tax part works, which might be entirely separate than this, you know, there's some property tax relief-
Right.
For, uh, historic, uh, places. And so maybe the property owner is like, you know, I don't know. It, it might be overthinking it a little bit too, so I'm not sure, trying to imagine why the city, well, I guess if it's city owned, if it's city owned, then-
Well-
Then they're just fighting with themselves.
What I, what I envision-
If Shane owns it, well, then he's coming in, he is a private citizen saying,
Right.
I want this.
Right. But, but, but what I, but what I envision is if, that's happened, right? And then the city says, hey, you know, we really wanna rezone this or something, but this is stuck here, right? There's this historic designated resource. Um, we're gonna need to kinda initiate the process to get that undesignedated and they're essentially taking away the property owner's rights at that point to maintain that as historically designated area, since they've gone through the process.
Well, but changing the designation can be done by the property owner. If the city is doing this on, I mean, we are the city, it's technically our property. But if the city has, owns the gazebo and wants to make a change, then they can do that, they just have to listen to the citizens who come to the public outcry. But if, if Shane owns it and wants to remove, doesn't want it removed, that's Shane's rights because it's private property, even if, even if it's a island in the middle of whatever's around it.
Well, and that's-
Property owners' rights, to me, are sacred.
Like literally what's coming into my head is Up, the movie Up, right? You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
So there's this house in the middle of this huge metropolitan, metropolitan thing because the property owner refused to give up that property, you know, it wasn't designated historical, but that's, that's what's coming in my brain, right? So as things get, regardless of where the property is, as things get changed around and time moves forward and thirty years from now, you know, we're all doing something different, right? Um, if the city or the planning commission says, boy, we really, really need this piece, but it's a holdout because, you know, ninety-five year old Shane with him is holding out on this particular piece of property, we're gonna go ahead and start the process, he's gonna get the signature and we're just gonna move this thing on, right? That, that's, that's my fear is sort of the, is for the convenience of the council or the planning commission in order to obtain some other goal outside of the historical designation thing, you know what I mean? I, I, I don't know that I'm articulating my point very clearly. But I think it's incumbent on the redesignation or removal of designation for the property owner to, um, either, A, have the opportunity- to, um, either, A, have the opportunity to refuse, and then we maintain the language as it is, but maybe offering that same opportunity for a landowner to refuse, or make it incumbent on the landowner to be the person to change that designation or remove the designation.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I, well, I don't know if this helps Matt with what you're, I think I'm hearing what you're saying is essentially that same refusal to consent, or better yet, the consent to designate is on the front end. It should be on the tail end if you wanted to undo it as well.
Right.
So I think, I mean, I think we can tweak that to, to make that apparent, cuz I do, I, I frankly, that language has been in the code since nineteen ninety-eight when the development code was adopted. So it was way before the Supreme Court decisions about consent have kind of, you know, shaped it. So I think that what that was there for is that in a lot of cities, you'll have historic districts, or you'll have historic buildings that have been designated, and then property ownership changes over time. So I think most likely the removal of a designation that we, that you normally see in areas, our new property owner comes in, they're encumbered with this historical building, and they don't wanna have to adhere to historical design guidelines cuz they wanna do a multiplex, or they wanna do commercial office space or something like that. And so, they would utilize the ability to remove a designation so that they could do what they wanted. So, but I do think that if, if I'm hearing you right, if we were to tweak that language to very clearly denote that removal also required that same owner consent as designation, would that put your concern where it needed to be?
I mean, I'm piggybacking off of what Commissioner Wayland said. I mean, he, he, he sort of initially brought it up as only being the property owner could initiate the process for removal of designation. I think I just got on the same wavelength, although I think he's changed channels on me a little bit. Um, but...
No, I think we're, we're tracking. But let's hear what Commissioner de Blasio has.
Well, I just... I just wanted to make sure that there's not a way for the planning commission or the city to remove the designation that would then allow them in the next decision-making process for either demolition...
Right.
Or alteration to now, they're the deciding part, body.
Right.
So they're, they, they did what they needed to do so they can make that decision.
That's exactly right.
So...
Initiating for convenience or whatever, so they can get to their end goal.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm thinking more, when I think of ownership, I think of individuals like all of us in this room.
Correct.
Not...
City property.
The city property. Is that kind of what your thoughts are, Michael?
Yeah, because if it's city property, they're the owner regardless, so they're... It's, it's hard to divorce them then from the, the next decision-making.
Right.
But on private land, it's easy to...
Truly private.
It's, it's easy to keep them honest and out of the, yeah.
Okay. So as long as we have the property owner's refusal to consent sacred and wherever it's appropriate, whether it be in demolition, moving, or whether it be in initiating the process or removing it, as long as we have that, the property owner has the ultimate decision sacred and above any committee government agency, except where the government agency owns it, then they still have those same rights as we do as individuals. Is that good?
I like it.
Crystal, is that good? Okay.
Well, my one question is, would eminent domain be a back alley way to get the city owner?
Well, I mean, we don't even, we don't even have it registered right now, so I mean, it's not...
Right, I mean...
We, we have to think though.
No, I agree.
Not only now, but down the road.
I'll let Shannon speak to it. There's some pretty strict rules of when cities can exercise eminent domain authority, though. I mean...
And in thirty years of being a city, thirty-five years, the city of Kaiser, if I'm correct, has never used eminent domain, is that...
Not quite correct.
Well, maybe out here at, yeah, Kaiser Station.
I guess it depends on what you mean by used. We never went to actual trial. For those of you that want some history, the baseball stadium, one of the three property owners took us all the way to basically the day of trial before they settled. And, and on ODOT projects, we've kinda had, where ODOT has had, we, we usually settle up with property owners on condemnation. So those are all, except for the stadium, have all been road projects. I'm kinda missing that last point. I started to...
Well, I just wondered if, if, you know, we have this whole thing protecting the private property owner's right to refuse uh, either designating or removal of designation. Is there still a way that through eminent domain that that would over, or supersede that private owner's right?
So by eminent domain, you mean the city wants something bad enough for it, for purely historical purposes that they condemn it?
Well, I'm saying, it, it's already, say, it's been designated.
Oh.
And the city now wants that for...
Wants it undesignedated.
Yeah, that gazebo land is now...
Yeah, well, you know, I'm a government lawyer. So I'm, I'm, and that reminds me, lawyerville, I think, was the term. That, I was wondering, is that a mini-series? Is that like Smallville or... But, um, that would be really out there. I mean, I can't, and back to my joke about being a government lawyer, I refuse to concede any point. I mean, can I, I can't sit here and tell you that would never happen, but politically, I can't imagine it would happen. And I'm not even sure legally, because you have to have a public purpose. And I suppose you could. I mean, if you had a road project that no one imagined, you know, thirty years from now, a road go through there? You're kidding. Well, no, a road doesn't need to go through there and is designated historic. Yeah, I think the state would probably get involved with that too. So, I, I, I can't, I don't think it's too likely a scenario, I guess is what I'm saying.
Crystal?
I did have one scenario in my mind that popped in my head of, let's go back to the gazebo and Shane owns the gazebo. And unfortunately, and it, and it becomes, it's now, you know, designated historic through our processes, and unfortunately Shane dies and has no heirs, and now it's historic and there's no owner?
Well, there's always an owner.
Okay, so what would be that process?
Well, now we have to kinda go back to my probate days. There's always, which I did for a short time, there's always gonna be an owner. If he dies without, without any heirs, I mean, literally no heirs. For those of you that want the boring intestate succession rules, intestate meaning dying without a will, they go back up and down third cousins, et cetera, et cetera. If there's absolutely no relatives at all, it goes to the state. I believe that's the rule.
And then would we want the opportunity to de-designate it, to take away its designation as a city to make different changes now that it's owned by the state?
I don't know.
At that point, I don't think Shane cares.
Okay, where are we at here? Michael?
Uh, well, I was gonna have another question off this topic, so I don't know, are we, uh, are we on...
Let's stay on topic and try to...
I think, I'm, I, I, I feel very settled about this. I think, um, as, as the three, or we've all discussed, I think if we retain the property owner's rights throughout from initiation, either via the council or planning commission, through, uh, de, uh, removal of designation, um, I, I think that's, I think that's good.
Then would letter F, the property owner's refusal to consent, remain in there?
I think you still have to have that...
Yeah.
To protect that property owner, and it matches state law, so it's really...
Okay.
Yeah, I think you kinda have to leave that.
So if we leave that in there, regardless of what some, say, a government agency wants to do, if it was your property, Mr. Lawyer, you would still have the right to refuse consent.
Yes.
And that's what you wanna see sacred and in there, in all circumstances.
Well, I think, I mean, property ownership is a, I mean, it's, it's one of the most sacred things we have in this country.
Right, okay.
I think you'd have to tweak the language out because it seems like that's only saying for...
Designation. I think Shane and I have the general intent of the commission.
Okay.
That it applies. Now, I guess the question is, does apply, uh, the discussion has been about sub E, removal of designation, what about for demolition and moving?
Well, I think, uh, Mr. Chair for me, that notwithstanding, I think the designation or the demolition and moving piece only applies to those identified in the National Historic Register, correct?
No. It's intended to also apply to those that have been locally designated, once they're designated.
My apologies. Well, and actually, if I may ask a clarifying question related to that. So we're missing a third possibility here. So we have our local designation, national designation, what about shippo?
Shippo doesn't truly designate, Shane better, can speak better to this.
Unclarif- put that with a real word.
The State Historic Preservation Office...
Thank you.
They keep a list of properties, and generally, they're a resource that people look at to determine if things would qualify for national registry designation, if they have significance, if they're considered, um... Oh, I can't think of the word right now. Essentially, they are archaeologist folks, right? I mean, that's, that's what they do. They don't in and of themselves have authority to protect historic resources, however. And so, from, I see your look. So with local governments, and again, I, I'll have to defer a little bit to Shannon here cuz I'm not the lawyer, but with the O A R, the way it's written, it gives local governments the ability to protect those historic resources. And the goal resources, you know, goal five, which comp plans have to show how we are complying with goal five for our natural resources and historic resources. And in the city of Kaiser, we have like basically three policies that talk about our historic resources in Kaiser. We should inventory them, we should protect them, and we should use this section of code to do so. That's literally the three things our comp plan says about historic. But generally, the State Historic Preservation Office, they keep a list. So for example, on, if you go to their website today, there's quite a few properties in Kaiser that are listed. Some are considered as likely to contribute, some are not likely to contribute, but it'll list the ages. There's some properties on Cade, which I've driven down Cade, I don't see anything of like architectural significance necessarily that's old. But because of the sole age of them being built in the forties and in some pretty old structures, they're on the State Historic Preservation Office's list. And there's a handful of other properties in Kaiser that are as well. Um, I think our comp plan talks about how many properties are on their list. But they don't necessarily do a assessment of value or designation cuz that's something that happens through the national parks system with the national registry for getting them registered and protected. So, I, anyway.
Well, and just to follow, I appreciate the, so I went and I looked at the shippo website, uh, the State Historic Preservation Office, sorry. Now I owe Commissioner Freeman, or Councilman Freeman, two dollars. So, uh, I looked at the website and I did notice, so the, the National Historic Preservation Site has nothing, right? I mean, as far as Kaiser's concerned, you got a small Indian school, uh, property east of I five. There's a patch like sort of south of Kaiser, and then there's a couple other things, but as far as minimal amount of value, there's not a ton. And so I was like, okay, well, then my next spot, I'm thinking in terms of, you know, order, federal, state, state had all this stuff, and going, oh, okay. So, but, but they, the, the State Historic Preservation Office does not specifically designate, they only make potential recommendations.
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
Anything else on this subject?
The, the big subject? I, I just had one question about buffers. Do we, would we require buffers around, not necessarily buildings, but maybe a site?
I hadn't considered that. Clearly, though, that would be something for your guys' consideration, if that was something that we wanted to add in here. I mean, that would be up to you. I hadn't really thought about it, to be honest.
Does, does federal registry or any shippo talk about that at all, State Historic Preservation Office?
I mean, generally, gen- yeah, I know, I've gotten in trouble for that before too. Generally speaking, what I've seen in other areas, no. I think primarily, so like, two of the cities that I looked a little closer at were Salem's cuz, you know, they're our nearest, you know, neighbor. And they have very defined areas and districts. And then they have these like pretty exhaustive lists of what things are and what things are not considered. You know, you have to do this and this and this, and if you live in the Busch Park area, you've got these rules. And if you live over here, you got these rules. And like Albany even, they have like four or five different historic districts. You know, the downtown core, the area by the train yard, the area, I think by the airport, which I thought was odd. But, um, anyway, so they have all these different districts that have their different standards. So, I didn't see anything in there that talked much about a buffer because they were already confined to a defined boundary. I would think that with the way that, uh, the, the code language as proposed, where Shannon kinda smashed together the district and the landmark and said it's a resource that's definable as a site or an area, I would think that maybe that would be something that would belong in the designation consideration, not maybe in the demolition, moving, modification considerations, personally. But I, honestly, that would be up to you guys as to whether or not you thought it was appropriate to do some sort of a buffer in addition to the designated area or the resource.
That's an interesting point, so...
I was just thinking, like, the, uh, was it the, um, what's it called, the, just by Sherry's, there's that plaque.
Yeah, yeah, the donation land claim.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's, that corner is like a distinct historic site or would be considered. But if there had been a buffer, would Sherry's be able to be right next to that like that? Or would there have to have been some type of separation?
Right. That has, that plaque there, and there's three or four of them elsewhere in town, are designating other points. Like that was, and it had something to do with the way the, uh, surveyors, the incentives they used there at that time. And it ended up, actually, that site is actually like in, in the middle of the intersection. And it's just a reference to what happened there.
Right.
So that's just like a...
Quot of interest?
A trivial informational piece. It's not a designation of any sort.
That was the only thing I could think of in Kaiser though, so...
Yeah.
So if we had something like that. But I, again, that's hypothetical, but...
I mean, and I think arguably with the language as proposed, Michael, if the city or a property owner wanted to come and say, hey, cuz that, that's like the, I think it's like the first donation land claim in Kaiser. It's like the, it, it references the, the corner point of one of the, the founding properties in Kaiser. I think that if somebody were to come to the city, to the planning commission, to the council and say, hey, we want you guys to designate that as something historically significant and, and afford certain protections, that we could put sideboards on that, I think this language as proposed gives the ability to do that. Um, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so are we fairly, I think what I hear is that we are, cuz the staff's recommendation is that we consider the proposal and recommend approval to the city council, including any additional tax changes, text changes. And I think that we're in agreement that essentially as written, but reinstating letter... E F, there's two letter Fs here, I just noticed that.
Well, one was the delete, one was the re-add.
Oh, okay, all right. So... But we, we document that as sacred, the property owner has the right to consent or deny consent.
In section four E is what you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
I, I would agree with that.
Okay. So, how are we on closing this public hearing, Shannon?
Um, since there's no one there, I think you can close the public hearing.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. So, I'm ready for a motion?
There's been a lot of...
A recommendation and a vote.
Okay, um, I make a rec- uh, motion to, uh, follow the recommendation of the staff to, uh, accept the amendments to the, uh, what's the exact, the historic, two-point-one-two-seven historic resources, um, section of the code with any text amendment that needs to be to honor private citizens' rights.
I'll second.
Shannon, does that give enough clarity?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we're done with that. Good job, folks. Appreciate your work on that. Okay. New, old business? Staff report?
Yeah, always the new, sorry, always the new old business that gets us. Okay, so last time we had planning commission was March?
March.
Yeah, so I think in the March meeting, we talked about the fact that we were getting the, the two grants that we have kind of up and running and moving forward. April twenty-sixth, we had our first public event here. Prior to that, we had stakeholder meetings, we had a citizen advisory committee group meeting, which Commissioner de Blasio has graciously agreed to participate in, thank you very much. And so really the revitalizer, oh man, I can't even say it, the revitalization plan, that grant is really fully moving forward. I had a good conversation with Commissioner Lawyer at our public event, and he gave me some good input on, hey, you need to get this thing online. So last week, we were able to get the survey and the interactive map, kind of the exercises they did at the public event in an online format. Debbie sent out an email blast for us this week, and we've put it on our Facebook and the webpage. So I would ask, I would implore you, if you haven't gone and done the survey yet, the survey's really fast. It's a, it's a pretty easy survey, but it's based, it's basically trying to establish the goals and objectives for the project. And then the interactive map, it's a pretty cool tool. You can drop a pin, and basically if there's things that you're concerned about or ideas you have, or, or, you know, whatever regarding transportation or uses or any of that, you can make those comments. And then we're able to actually export that back out into database that we can give to our consultants. And then they can incorporate those comments into the recommendations that will be forthcoming in the next few months. So we're excited about that. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Lawyer, for your input on that, because it, it was helpful. We went from having, I think there was like maybe twenty-six or so people at our public event. We didn't get a lot of participation in our goals and objectives. We got it online, Kaiser Times did a story, put it on their Facebook. Hundred-and-eighteen surveys have come in so far. So we were really excited about that, because it's actually getting people to look at what are the important things that, you know, are driving this project. So that's kind of just a little update on that piece. And then the education and outreach grant, the kind of the other grant that's running alongside that, we received kind of a draft memo for that piece. And we are in the process of trying to schedule the, uh, the community workshop. So stay tuned on that. We'll keep you posted as to when that may be. Initially, they were eyeing a late May date because, but because of other conflicts, Irish Festival being one of them, from our end saying, hey, you know, Irish Festival's coming up, you, you can't mess with that time. You know, you gotta give some break there, people are busy. So we're kind of looking at possibly June, maybe when we're doing the workshop. And then after the workshop happens, there'll be something that ultimately we go and we do kind of, we're planning on doing a joint planning commission council meeting for the actual presentation adoption piece. I think other than that, there, I think that's about as much as we got, yes.
I haven't done the survey yet. I look at my email on my phone, so it's-
Oh, no worries, no worries.
I need to start, I'd be on a computer to do it. But is it in Spanish due, or?
I don't know if we got the survey monkey up in Spanish yet or not. I will find that out, however. Thank you. I know we had the information in Spanish at the meeting, but I don't know if we got it up on the website as well, yes?
So when we did the park survey one, we actually used Counselor Herrera. He was able to be available for that, and I think he would be very interested in, in helping with that to ensure the, the opportunity for everybody in Kaiser to do that, so.
Right on.
Anything else, Shane?
Uh, no, I think that's it for me.
Shannon?
Nope.
Counselor Freeman.
I'll see what I have for you. Well, uh, last week was budget. So we had budget Tuesday and Thursday night, completed it on night two, which was great. I had the opportunity to be chair this year, so if you ask anyone, I ran a tight ship so we could be done and out of here, but it was great. It was good. This week, tomorrow's West Kaiser Neighborhood at seven PM here. And also tomorrow night is the first event of, it's a Latino graduation, and so they're honoring some Latino students with some scholarships. And it's something that's new to our area, and Counsel Herrera's spearheading that. So I'm excited to see how that event is. Lots of volunteer opportunities, which are listed on our city website. Shane mentioned Irish Festival's coming, and so that's the third weekend in May. And I know that they're still, still looking for volunteers, so anyone can go to the Kaiser Chamber website and look for volunteer opportunities. Thank you.
Okay. The council representative for this coming Monday is supposed to be Kyle and Debbie, um, he's not here for personal family reason. You think maybe we should consider a substitute for that?
And that date is wrong, too. May twenty-first, I believe, not May fourteenth on there.
Oh. Okay. Yeah, you're right, okay. So then-
Yeah, I'll take it.
Are you willing to flip?
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
I know the council loves seeing my face.
Okay.
Always welcome, always welcome.
A couple of things before we adjourn. And these are community reminders. Kaiser Fire District has their annual pancake feed this Sunday. It's used to, a lot of that goes to the volunteers as well as to some of the career people, but it ends up serving our community. So I would encourage everybody to participate in that. Take your mom to, or have your spouse take you to pancake breakfast. And then this coming Monday, May the fourteenth, Kaiser Fire District is celebrating their seventieth anniversary this year. And there's going to be a reception at the Fire Hall from six to eight PM. There'll be a number of former members of the department, as well as, I think, some of the current members that are serving as volunteers. It's open to the public, there's gonna be refreshments, cake and cookies kind of thing, it's real low-key. But it would be nice to participate. They've obviously served this community longer even than the city has been. So that will be Monday, the fourteenth, at six o'clock, Kaiser Fire Hall. And with that, I'm ready to adjourn. Oh.
Just one other community thing. So this Saturday, Cloud Creek Watershed Council doing a big cleanup at Kaiser Rapids Park. Cleaning up sticks to prepare for the next phase of the orchard. And in terms of firefighters, local firefighters, if you haven't had a chance to see Mr. Wayland's interview with the Kaiser TV, fantastic interview. Mr. Wayland was a volunteer firefighter in Kaiser for a long time and had a wealth of knowledge there, so I'll, I'll take my Lickens after the meeting on that one. But it's a really, it's a really good interview, and, uh, you know, on behalf of myself and my family, thank you for being a volunteer firefighter for a long time.
It was a treat. Okay, we ready to adjourn? We are adjourned.